We'd like to call the City Council regular meeting to order on Tuesday, January 15th, 2019. Happy New Year, we're grateful you're all with us. We've been on a little bit of a break, so again, thank you for being here. I'd like to please invite, let's see, Reverend Arnold Jackson to please come forward from Mount Moriah Church. He is going to give us our invocation, after which I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Would you bow your heads with me? Oh God, we come to you this evening and we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We pray for your presence in this meeting tonight. We've listened during the work session with the many challenges with water. We've listened as Vice Mayor has talked about family coming together with the Native Americans in Hila River. And there are other issues that are coming before the council tonight. So we pray that you would be in the midst of it all, you would be with the council, you'd be with the city manager and his staff, and then most importantly, you would be with the citizens of Maricopa. Guide and lead us, be in the midst of everything, and we'll be sure to give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. All this we ask, in the strong and mighty Mass's name of Jesus, we all said, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you, that'll take us to item two, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Buddy?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember B. Tielo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Mayor Price? Here. Great, thank you. We have nothing on item three for proclamations, we'll move to the report from the mayor. A couple of things, obviously, since we've met, won't be talking at length, we were able to take some time off, I hope, all of us, and enjoy the holiday season, so that was good. But, as you know, we ramped right back up at the beginning of January and things were going like crazy. We started with the movement of the California Zephyr car. If you had a chance to see that, that was something special. You know, I saw that thing get hooked up and I could've sworn it was going to crumble in half, but by golly, they made those things well in those days, so anyways, it was fabulous. We're very excited for where its location is. You may or may not know that longtime family of Maricopa, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, have the land right there, we should call it Rotary Park, and they were kind enough to donate that piece of property for basically what we would term the final resting place, if you will, or final location of the Zephyr, and we're happy that it's there. I think it's going to be a great addition and focal point to the city, especially with what we're able to do around it to make it a nice little pocket park there. So, again, with the Historical Society, we're thankful to them for, and their agreements to help restore it, as well as others that are willing to give to it. So, we're very excited and very thankful about what that's going to become in that area. So, obviously, you've seen that the Overpass project is moving right along, you saw that the girders were going in, starting to get real. I'd also like to point out that in all of government's inefficiencies, if you noticed, we closed the road for the placement of those girders at the same time we brought in the cranes for the movement of the Zephyr. Those cranes were then used for the placement of those, thereby saving you dollars, that's a good thing. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we are trying to do our best and coordinate with the different agencies, like ADOT names and others, to make these things happen. So, it is helping things move quickly, further, farther, faster, and we're excited about that. And last but not least, I want to echo some of the comments that Vice Mayor Wade made in the work session. Had the opportunity yesterday to host Hila River Governor Stephen Lewis here at the city of Maricopa, right here in this hall. We took him on a little tour of the building, and then got to sit down with him for probably 45 minutes to an hour, and just talked to him about all the different challenges that the Hila River Indian community faces, as well as the challenges that we face. As you know, one of the biggest challenges I think we all face regardless of whether we work or are retired, and that's the driving of the 347, and all that goes into that. And as you may or may not know, the Hila River Indian community is one that owns the land on both sides of that road, minus the right-of-way that ADOT owns for the road. And so it makes it a very complex situation, especially when you cross two counties. And so while we've been working with them for many years to move them forward, one of the things that in my discussions with him over the past years has been, they have not been willing to entertain the ideas of working together with ADOT because of some of the difficulties and the differences they've had with them on what they foresee or what they perceive as broken promises, and also, you know, lawsuits that have entailed between the two. And I think that, at the same time, they've understood that they have resources that are precious to them, as well as the fact that they too have community members that they fear for their safety, they want to see growth happen, and they need to see things change as well. And so, you know, the proposal was several years ago that they start working together with us on the 347, and that would then expand into something on the I-10. We got the news in late November or mid-November about the fact that they were willing through MAG and through our proposal to work with MAG, to be kind of the intercessory, and therefore study the complete from I-10 into the center of Maricopa, what the 347 is, as well as the widening project that is proposed for the I-10. They were using that as leverage, and probably rightfully so, for some of the things that they were using against ADOT. I'm not saying that all problems are solved, but I am saying that I think that we had a great conversation, I think we've determined that we are going to be able to find more and enhanced partnerships that will allow us to do what we did with the Overpass, and that is to drive the funding partnerships that are critical in order to create the leverage that we need with ADOT, and ultimately, you know, the federal government, in order to get a project like the 347 done. And what I mean by that is whether it's widening, whether it's overpasses, whether it's, you know, lights or no lights, or bridges, whatever the case might be on 347, we're going to know that through that study that's going on right now, and that's being done and should be done hopefully by the end of the year. It could go into next year, but if it stays on its schedule, it could be the end of the year. So, again, that's a really big deal for us, as we simply don't know what we don't know right now, and as we get through it, we'll have a much better idea of the options, the potentials, the costs, and then we can start partnering those together on how to create a unified voice to attack that between us and Pinal County and Maricopa County and ADOT, and Hila River, and everybody else. So, again, it's a huge, huge step in the right direction. I want to thank Governor Lewis for his, you know, very busy schedule, for spending so much time with us, for being so open with us, and for telling us about the things that they're working on too. We probably discussed 15 or 16 different really important topics, you know, I can't list them all here today, but, again, looking for partnerships where we can to help build that relationship of trust. So, very excited about that. With that, I will close and move on to the report from the city manager. Mr. Horst?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as always. I have two reports tonight on ongoing projects. First is the Pinal County, Maricopa Annex. As we introduced, we met with our, the county team last week, with our staff. They plan to construct 44,000 square feet facility to include a board of supervisor offices, community development offices, assessor office, recorder office, clerk of the court, adult probation, juvenile probation, a sheriff's holding facility for the court needs, and some other support amenities. The good news is they plan to start this construction in October, November of this year. This project will not only aid in bringing needed county services to our local constituents, it will also create new jobs for local people as well, and so we're excited about that. The second is to update you on the North Santa Cruz-Wash Stakeholder Short Term Project, not to be confused with the more long-term FEMA project that we're working with the Corps of Engineers. But we met with them on January the 8th. The group has now identified three potential alternatives, including a new alternative that's just recently surfaced that shows much promise. These will be reviewed over the next 30 to 60 days as we work towards a draft DCR that we hope to be submitted in May or June of this year. So, we're on a renewed fast-track pace that if we're able to move this forward, and we're also working on financial possibilities, funding. Essential for them. We'll keep you updated.
Before we move on. And I also just wanted to thank our staff. One of the things you may not know that goes on behind the scenes is that if you haven't, if you've been coming to these meetings for a while, you've seen the ramp-up and the acceleration of lots of projects happening, lots of things coming out of the ground, and we're all working 1,000 times overtime to make it happen. But at the same time, I wanted to give kudos to the staff. I know that while we were all quote-unquote on holiday vacation, there was an issue that arose where, you know, a whole bunch of emails and phone calls and basically, you know, a day's work had to transpire, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out in the fact that they were able to resolve the issue. It's for one of our really big projects that we have going on. It was with a vendor who is very difficult to deal with on a regular day, much less on a holiday, and they were able to do it. So, again, many thanks to staff, so appreciate it. With that, let's move on to the minute, or excuse me, to the Call to the Public. I have a few speaker cards, we'll go in order of the speaker cards I have first, and then we'll open it up to anybody else. So, Judith, would you come on up, please? And again, just as a reminder, if you're unused to speaking at Call to the Public, that, you know, we want to hear from you, we want to know what's going on, we want to know what's on your mind, but please just note that legally, we can't reply, or if it's not agendized, so, but we do want to hear from you, we have staff available, and we'll get back to you. Make sure there's a button pressed, the little green light comes on, right at the base of it. Kazi, would you help out there?
Thank you. I am very technologically challenged. As a composer, I work in 18th-century fashion with pencil on paper, so when I say I'm technologically challenged, I mean it. I'm here on behalf of Maricopa Arts Council, which I serve as one of five co-directors, to announce three arts events and to express great appreciation for the cooperation and wholehearted support from the city council that have gone into two of these events. Starting first, at the, towards the end of February, on behalf of Shelley Gillespie, I'm here to convey her words. Shelley is the director of Copas Short's Film Fest, which is going to have its Sunday, February 24th event, right here in the city council chamber. It's going to be great, filmmakers from all over coming here to partake of the best that have come through the small aperture of review that goes into the judging of Copas Short Film Fest entries. Shelley says, "The festival is coming together well, and we are so grateful to have the city, DECA, CAC, and the many businesses supporting us as partners." Coming a little further closer to the current date, we have a Maricopa Arts Council event on February 9th at a city property. At Maricopa Library, we have the start of the Inside the Creative Mind lecture series, which this year is not going to focus so much on inspiration as on the engineering of the arts. How those creative sparks are made manifest in a finished work that is then brought before the public for enjoyment, or mystification, or some combination of the two. Each of our Inside the Creative Mind lectures will feature two different artists working in compatible but differentiated media. The first event, on Saturday, February 9th, in the afternoon, 1:00 to 3:30, will be presented by painter Crystal Hoy and Navajo Weaver Tiffany Yasi. There will be a small reception following, and the event is free and open to the public. Coming even closer, the week before the Creative Mind begins, we have real creativity on display throughout City Hall. Maricopa Arts Council would like very much to thank the city council, and the city manager, and in particular, council members Vince Manfredi and Nancy Smith for supporting endeavors of Maricopa Arts Council in this year so fully. We are very grateful to our elected officials for understanding that Maricopa's art scene is growing by leaps and bounds, and it's attracting people from all over. The February 2nd event, Saturday night, is the All Arizona Poetry Slam Championship. This has grown so much in its three years on offer here in Maricopa that it has outgrown its two former venues, and needs to be housed in a great space that announces Maricopa loud and clear. We have poets coming from all over the state, and they are coming with their entourages. The event will be led by our constant slam master, the klute, who is nationally-known poet Bernard Shover, and internationally-known shark conservationist. Klute, right now, is swimming with sharks off Cape Town. He'll be back, though, in Maricopa in time for the slam. And we will have food trucks outside, and the Arts Council stamp on this event, which is always to marry more than one arts form, together in an event that speaks creativity loud and clear. We have two visual artists using very different methodologies to create works on canvas, who will be doing their thing in the lobby from 5:30 to 6:30, and not only will there be money prizes to the top three poets, but the top two poets will each get one of those created works in the art on the spot. $10 admission from 5:30 to 9:30, right here in City Hall. Thank you very much for letting me get it all in.
Thank you, Judith.
And Happy New Year to Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Wade, the city council, city manager Rick Horst, all the officials, and especially, all my neighbors here in the great city of Maricopa.
Thank you, Judith. And we certainly hope that the klute returns to us not half-eaten by those sharks, so we appreciate it. All right, Susan, Susan Cameron, would you come on up, please?
Hi, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Wade, and council members, and all my friends and neighbors here in Maricopa. I am one of the new members now on the Art Committee, as well as with the Maricopa Arts Council with Judith, and we've been looking to do a gallery that will be shown in the hallways here in City Hall. So, what we will be working on our next step is to put a calling-all artists in the local newspaper, The Monitor, and also in maricopa.com. At the bottom of the little blurb, we're going to the gentleman Adam, who does your website. Okay, I'm going to work with him, we're going to have a link at the bottom that will take him to the City Hall. The medium tastefully done, it's going to be Maricopa in everything in your life. So, that's our plan coming up, and I'm really excited to be part of this Arts Committee because I'm just one of those people, when I really believe in something, I'm in their full-tilt boogie. So, thank you all so much, and things are moving forward with the arts in Maricopa, and it really pleases me a lot. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan, we appreciate it. Constance Jackson, Constance? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, Mr. Wade, and City Council. I'm Constance Jackson, and this is Amanda Clark, and we are on the Culture Affairs Committee. And I just want to invite all citizens, everybody, for February 5th here at City Hall for our Beginning of Black History Month celebrations. So, when you come out on the 5th, you will hear music, there will be art displayed, posters displayed for Black History Month. We will be at 7:00 PM here in City Hall, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Constance. Next up is Richard Weisen, I'm not going to say it right, I apologize. Richard, come on up. Tell me how to pronounce your last name, I'm just misreading it, I apologize.
It's Richard Weisenberg, CPA.
Perfect.
Well, thank you guys, gentlemen and ladies, thank you everyone for allowing me to speak. I'm a small business owner with Liberty Tax from Richard Weisenberg and the office of Richard Weisenberg, CPA. One of the things that we do is we have our marketing efforts, we do have wind feathers, and we do have wind feathers and flags, of course, to basically, as a small business, to gain the attention and visibility for our business. That's how we've been doing it for years, we continue to be doing it for years, and we continue to do that. The difficulty in Maricopa is there is a lot of restrictions, a lot more restrictions than even in Casa, it's been a lot more, we have an office in Casa Graham for the last eight years, and it is very heavily restricted in the visibility. For instance, you can only put out one wind feather, not one wind feather within 50 feet of each other, one wind feather, period. And you can't just put it out right in front of business, you only allow one wind feather, one visibility component, and that's it, not one by the road. Do you know how roughly, as a small business owner, with our high rent, high cost of labor, how more, how much more difficult it makes it as a small business owner? It makes it extremely difficult. Makes me wonder why I want to put a business here in Maricopa. We did, we took the, rolled the dice last year, we did. But the point is, I want to succeed, and I need your help as a council members to allow us to do that, maybe ease the restrictions in this component. If you're asking us to pay the high rent, high cost of labor, minimum wage, and then you're throwing us another obstacle of, hey, sorry, can't have that wind feather out, that's our major component, not just our business, but a lot of businesses, as small businesses, how we advertise our product. And if you're driving down the road, have you seen one of these guys waving? It's a number-one way we attract our client, it's funny as hell. Rich Vitell is laughing, it is amusing. But honestly, it is our number-one aggressive way we market as a client, or for our clientele, our customer base. And if you can, if you're able to ease those restrictions, we can definitely further grow the business. And as a CPA, it's our, it's definitely not your, it's definitely not your typical marketing approach, but Liberty Tax is what, it's what works. We love it here, we've done very well for our first year, our first tax season, we ended the, ended as the Washington number-one office in the US for Liberty Tax. But I need your help to build that, and allowing to hopefully maybe take a look and say, maybe these restrictions are a bit, bit too confined. That's my, again, Richard Weisenberg, CPA, Liberty Tax, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Richard, we appreciate it. Anyone else like to approach the podium and talk to us? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, hello, city council members, and our neighbors here in Maricopa. I'm here to talk about the Martin Luther King Celebration that's going to take place here in the city of Maricopa. This is the fifth annual Martin Luther King Celebration in Maricopa, and this year, the organization, the Citizens for Martin Luther King Celebration, have decided to do two activities, one in the evening and one during the day. The one in the evening will be held at Copper, at Global Water, from 7:30 until midnight. It will feature live music, DJ orders by Helen, and then the recognition and honoring of local unsung heroes, people that you don't know, people that you do know, but you don't know what they do. And there's a number of people in the community that do some great things, and we want to recognize them during that evening. That's $25 per person, and if you are interested, I have some flyers here that has the detailed information, or you can go to ethanbright.com and call up Celebration for Martin Luther King, excuse me, Citizens for Martin Luther King Celebration. On January, I didn't mention the date, January 19th is the date. On January 21st, we'll actually have the actual fifth event, fifth-year event, that will be in Copper Sky. The organization has come from Secoria Parkway, Copper Sky inside, the Copper Sky outside, which is a great problem to have, it's grown to that effect. We'll have food booths, vendors, we'll have activities by rock star cheer, we have, Boy Scouts are going to be doing the flag ceremony, a community prayer by members of clergy here in the community. So, it promises to be a wonderful event, and that's going to go from 11:00 to 4:00 PM at Copper Sky near the basketball courts, basketball and tennis courts. So, we hope that you will take the opportunity to attend one of the activities. At the daytime event, we're going to honor youth, in the same way that we're honoring the adults in the evening. Youth that do things that you know them, but you don't have an idea of what they do, they're unsung heroes, that's what we're calling them, unsung heroes. So, hopefully, I'll see all your faces there on the 19th, and again, on the 21st, if not one or the other, will be fine with me. As I said, I have some flyers here, I'll set them right up here on the desk, that have the contact information for how you can participate. The Citizens for Martin Luther King Celebration have been working for about a month, a little more than a month, to make sure that this activity is one that you will enjoy, and I think you will definitely enjoy a night of evening swag on the 19th, and community support on the 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to approach the podium for Call to the Public at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public and move on to item seven, which is the Minutes. Council, can I have a motion to approve item 7.1, the Minutes? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to item eight, which is the Consent Agenda. Council, I need a motion to approve item 8.1 through 8.3. Can I have a motion, please?
No.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then that takes us to our regularly-scheduled agenda, and that is the items nine, 9.1. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, amending the Community Services Department fee schedule and the Copper Sky Multi-Generational Aquatics Center fee schedule. This is for discussion and action. Nathan, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Wade, and City Council. So, if you remember, which I'm sure you do, about a month and a half ago, or two months ago, actually, we presented our fee policy, our pricing policy, to try to establish guidelines for us to operate going forward in how we determine pricing for our programs and services for the, for the Community Services Department, and that includes Copper Sky. In the last 60-plus days, we've had a whirlwind tour of educating the public and asking for community input, and I want to thank our committees, including the Parks, Recreation, and Library Board, and then the Age Friendly Committee, who listened to me twice, so thank you very much for that. And while we probably didn't please absolutely everybody, I think we generally reached a consensus, and for the most part, we have some support for our fee schedule. So, just going through a few slides now to explain those key changes, and then we'll have some time for questions, of course, at the end. So, some of the key changes are our scholarship and discount policy, which I believe we spoke about before, it includes discounts on our Copper Sky membership, and what we believe this does is open access to families, large families, young, single mothers, single fathers with children, but then also provides opportunities for individuals and seniors as well. So, this discount can offer up to 40 to 20 percent, or 20 to 40 percent off of our membership rates, and we'll go through that as we go forward when we get more into the pricing. And the applications are completed annually now instead of quarterly, so we've tried to remove the redundancy of, more than likely, those, the income levels haven't changed in just three months, so we've changed that as well. As well, in the fee policy and the pricing policy, we've set parameters for future increases within the pricing scale, so to, in a short, I think we talked more about this back in November, but to shortly explain that, if we have, let's say, sports, flag football costs $50, in a given year, we would not increase that for a resident or a member by more than $5 in a given year. So, even though there's a large scale, if you're looking at it, where it might be from $20 to $900, we would not operate or expand the pricing within that scale by more than $5 in a given year, unless there is some mitigating factor, and in that case, we would go to the PRL Board and, for a recommendation. Another big change in our fee schedule is the rental fees. We've talked about this a little bit, but the community park versus the sports complex philosophy, our beautiful parks are well-maintained by our great Parks crew with Mike, Mike Riggs, Mike Blasky and their teams, and they're maintained at a very high level, and, but there is a differentiation in those, in those levels of maintenance when we talk about the field quality, how often they're maintained, et cetera. And so we've differentiated in the fee schedule, Pocana Park, which is labeled as a community park, versus our Copper Sky Sports Complex, because of those levels of maintenance, and there's been an increase at Copper Sky while the fields at Pocana have remained the same at the low end for our community members. Our rental, our rental pricing in the past was, particularly in aquatics, was not realistic. We ended up losing money if we did a pool rental, so if you wanted to have an exclusive use of the pool, we actually lost money in doing that, which is not a good idea, so we've decided to change that and make it more realistic, because it's six guards to open the pool at a minimum, it's not one or two, which is what we were... It's not one or two, which is what we were charging for, and then the hours of usage. So while there's not a big increase in the actual facility use, there is an increase in how many guards are paid for and required. On the other side of it, our gymnasium fees were, compared to other facilities, probably fairly reasonable, but we felt excessive. It didn't allow opportunities for us to provide access to community groups who wanted to use it, and the only, only ability to do that was through fee waivers. So we allowed a sliding scale on the, on the lower side there where community, where community groups who wanted to raise money or do things like that could do it in an affordable manner. While still on the high side, if there is a, a construction trade show or something like that that does have the money, we have the high side available too, and we can choose to execute within that range. And then that flexible pricing allows us to recruit tournaments and events while protecting our community programs, which was the goal of those changes. So we'll get into, the bulk of the changes came with the Copper Sky membership. It centered around, where we set our price point, particularly for day passes, which is kind of where you build off of. Our day passes were extremely low, and when compared to our memberships, even at the monthly rate, if you didn't come very often, there was no reason to commit. If you came once a week, there was no reason to commit to a membership. That really makes it difficult to budget revenue and, and understand where our revenue versus expense is going to come in. So we really tried to change that level first at our day pass, which then impacted our punch pass card. And then really all moving towards trying to get people on an annual membership, which allows us to operate in, at least in a way that we can anticipate the revenue to come in. So there's some limits on the punch passes, the day pass rates increase, and then incentivizing commitment. And with all the changes, there's no increase, there's actually a small decrease in our annual membership cost. So the additional fees, we wanted to make sure all of these are something that we can waive as part of a negotiation or a, a sales process. But a joining fee, an enhancement fee, and a cancellation fee, again, to try to incentivize commitment. The enhancement fee will go towards a replacement fund that will allow us to maintain our equipment without having to come to council to, to get part of what in the past had been a CIP project to replace our equipment. Now we'll have an annual fee that will go in there to replace that on an ongoing basis. A big part of the direction we receive from council was to improve the value of a Copper Sky membership. We've done that in a number of ways, some of them are still in the works, but I'd like to talk about some of them. In general, it'll be up to 25 percent less to participate in a sports program, an aquatics program, or an enrichment program. You'll be, receive free parking passes and fun zone passes for our events, access to off-site programming. We're working on starting classes in the library in the next few months after the library closes to have fitness classes north of, of the MCG to make sure there's still value for members who maybe can't make it down four nights a week, but could take something if they live in, in Rancho closer to the library. So those will be accessible to our, our members at no additional cost and available for a drop-in rate as well. Free guest passes to allow our members to hopefully share the greatness that is Copper Sky and invite their friends, neighbors, families, if family's in town, they can bring them in without having to pay an additional fee. And then we're also going to be seeking new programming opportunities, whether it's basketball tournaments. We have a new kids' fitness program that's starting where while you're working out upstairs, your kids are getting a fitness opportunity downstairs, learning about nutrition, and then being physically active as well. So that whole family fitness really gives us a nice proposition and a nice opportunity that's different from a typical gym. And then priority registration for popular programs, some of these things could be specialty camps, summer camps, things like that. And then we're seeking opportunities for businesses to partner with the Copper Sky membership to provide discounts for Copper Sky memberships as well. So that, that should be coming down the road, and we'll also have discounts on our merchandise available at Copper Sky. So the inclusion of discounts on membership programs, I spoke before, just briefly going over this again, 20 and 40 percent off of an annual membership for those who qualify. Seniors and veterans receive 10 percent off of, of the membership at a base level, but they can also stack those scholarships if they're in need. So if you're at 10 percent, you get 10 percent off of an annual membership, you're talking, for a family, you're talking about 50-something dollars a month. If you then can get, if you qualify at 20 percent or 40 percent, that comes off in addition to that 10 percent. I have some things that will show that. What that's based on, that qualification is based on federal poverty guidelines. This was something that we spoke about with the PRL to talk about, how do we get to the point where we are accessible? We aren't changing it so much that people, and particularly, we talked in relation to seniors who are on a fixed income, would still be able to access the facility with the changes we're making. And, and the agreed-upon point was 300 percent above poverty level. Residents can qualify for 20 percent off an annual membership, and at 200 percent or below, they would be eligible for a 40 percent off an annual membership. And then, so that means a single parent with two kids making less than $42,000 annually pays just $27 a month to access the facility. So we feel like that really meets the needs and provides access in a fair way, and we'll get into a little bit the, what the application process is, but that really opens that door. A family of six making $67,000 pays just $34 a month. So those discounts are, are making our building more accessible, and we hope that increases our membership. And from a financial standpoint, once we have this fee, the pricing policy is set, our increases will be set on a regular basis. It won't be another big jump, it will be these one, two dollars. And if we're at 10, $15,000 member units, that, you can do the math, a dollar increase per month is 10, $15,000 a month. So those small increases won't hurt so much in this process, yet we can continue to operate the facility as responsibly as possible. So here you have just a chart of our, our, the poverty guidelines, and you can see on the, the left, the, the left, the size of family and how that relates to your income. So a family of six, you can see right there at 67,000, you would qualify for, for that discount. And it goes all the way up, if, if we're talking about a senior couple, you're looking at 32,000 or 49,000 to receive some additional discount on top of the senior discount, same thing for veterans. The scholarship program will have an easy application project, process. It's one page. All we're asking to do, we're not going to keep your personal information outside of the one-page application, but show your tax return, which allows us to verify who you've claimed as part of your household. There will be some outliers where you might have, you might be claiming a, a child one year and then not the next, depending on your, your marital status. It'll prove your current income, but in addition to that, we'd like to ensure that that's correct and accurate as of the time of, as the time of application. And then proof of residency, which is utility bill or alternative. The scholarship program's only available to residents. Information is verified and returned or destroyed if that's what is desired. We hope the, the application process should take two weeks or less, so you don't have to wait a long time to find out. The information will be there, there'll be a cover letter that's returned to you so you understand what you're paying, and, and we'll go forward from there and hope that, that the family, families and individuals are able to access the facility for a long time. So a lot of our, our discussion with our committees was centered around seniors. A lot of the feedback we, we received came from seniors, and they are seeing from a standard basis, their jump is the largest when it talks about the baseline pricing. So instead of that senior-specific pricing that was established at about 40, 40-plus percent off of our, our adult price, we've changed that to 10 percent as a standard discount. And, and then again, with the 40 percent off, if you, if you're applying for an annual membership and you get the scholarship discount, you can actually pay less than you would be paying prior or as of today. So as of the, the, the date that the fees go into effect, you would actually pay less than you are right now. We understand that not everybody qualifies, but the idea being if you need access, if you need help, that help is there, and we're providing that access too if you are on a low fixed income. We also, it's clear, we brought this up in the last presentation, that we, we currently offer four, or provide four access opportunities through your insurance company. We're, we're going through the process of transitioning those who were on United Healthcare under Silver Sneakers to now with their on United Healthcare through Optum. This month is a grace period, so we're working really hard to get with those folks to make sure that they don't lapse or don't have to worry about that in February. It does change from that perspective, but even on Optum, which is probably the most expensive option for a lot of seniors if you're moving from Silver Sneakers, it's still, it's still $12 a month is what they'll settle at when they sign up for the Optum program. So, so again, points of access and opportunity was the goal here. So here's a table that highlights the senior pricing with the scholarship level. This doesn't include the, the insurance plans, but if you look in the bottom right, you can look at a senior, the monthly rate at 15, 12 if you qualify, at 40 percent, 20, 16 at 20 percent, and then just the standard senior discount. As compared to, say, the YMCA, the YMCA starts at 60, and then if you have Optum or something like that, you might save 50 percent. Or if you have Silver Sneakers and they accept that, you, you get the same thing that we offer. So we're no different in that regard, but when it comes to our standard fees, we're much, much less. All right, any questions?
Council, questions? We'll start with Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nathan. I want to start off by reminding everybody that when you first came to City Council two months ago, the biggest concern that I had was the jump in senior pricing. And I asked you to go out, start talking to our population, find out how they felt about it, see if there are other options. And I, I believe someone else asked for you to come back with options, and that's exactly what you did. But what I want to do is I want to thank you, and there may be people that are part of your department as well, that I'm not aware of that need to be thanked, but also I want to thank Joan Kozar, because I felt so strongly about this concern that I wanted you to have lots of people to talk to. And so I called Joan and I said, or wrote her an email, and I said, Joan, I need this word to get out, because the media wasn't picking it up, they were disinterested in the subject, and I couldn't believe that. But I'm like, Joan, I need you to get this out to your seniors, because she has a wide network of seniors. And she did a fabulous job. As soon as she got the information out, I started getting emails, I know the mayor started getting emails, probably other council members as well. You started getting emails and telephone calls. You held one-on-ones with Joan and others. You held one-on-ones with constituents or residents of a variety of different types. And you went, just as you indicated, multiple times to Age Friendly and/or to Parks Recovery and Library and then to Age Friendly. I think it's the best job I've seen of getting out in the community and gathering input. And I think what it did is it fruitioned into what I think seniors, and I think Joan would agree me, would agree with me, seniors find acceptable. They find the changes that you made, the modifications that you made, very acceptable for the needs of the seniors at whatever level of income that they currently have. And so I want to applaud you for doing that. I found that process very phenomenal, and I think you did an excellent, excellent job in doing that. And Joan, thank you as well, because without her network, we wouldn't have had so much feedback, and I just felt really good about that. In addition to that, I just want to touch on the fact that because you were also very, very involved in Facebook, and I'm like, wow! You know, when our city employees take on answering questions and correcting misinformation on Facebook, it's really pretty cool. I know we have several council members and the mayor who do that as well. And it's so personal, and you actually answered a lot of questions and made a lot of contacts that way as well. But the conclusion that I came to was that the two things that we ended up with people still being upset about, as you indicated, was the punch cards and the day passes and the rates that they were originally provided. And that's because they were getting a killer deal, like a super killer deal. So I, you know, if I had to answer any questions with those folks, I tried to help them understand that rate was a killer deal and not sustainable for Copper Sky and not fair to the people who pay the memberships. So I think that's important to point out as well, and I think you did a great job there. And then lastly, I think the, one of the aspects that I really want to bring home, because you always touch on it, and I feel like it's just a little light, is the value that you're adding to memberships. I mean, just to give you an example, in one year at Copper Sky, if I'm remembering correctly, I brought everybody in my family out to play racquetball with Rocky Myers. And I had to pay, because they're all out of, out of town residents, I had to pay $10 a person. I think that thing with pickleball cost me like $100, I don't know. So as a member, I see that as a huge benefit, being able to bring in a certain number of guests to Copper Sky. So I think the value proposition, and I know that it will continue to grow, as I know you talked today to the seniors in regards to, or yesterday to the seniors in regards to what additional opportunities you want to bring to them and expanding the value. So the value proposition is really, really key and very important. I mean, free parking to our events, free kids' own passes, I didn't realize that, that's a cool one as well. Free guest passes, all of that stuff is really valuable. And I think in closing, just my last thought is that what makes Copper Sky different to the other fitness organizations that we have within our city is this value proposition, what it offers a family, and so cool that we're offering Copper Sky to a single mom, which I used to be, the ability to be able to afford Copper Sky for her and her children. That whole value proposition is what sets us aside from the other fitness, which is primarily just fitness, which is perfectly fine if that's all you're looking for, but all the other stuff that you're bringing. I think you've done a fabulous job, and I don't know if you guys have been watching, but it's pretty cool what you did and reaching out to the seniors. And Joan, do you agree?
Yeah, it was pretty phenomenal. So I thank you. I definitely support the proposed changes that you're bringing tonight, and I just want you to make sure that you understand how much I appreciate that.
No, thank you, and thank you for your input along the way. And I want to thank Brenda, who's here tonight, and our entire staff, Danny and the folks down at Copper Sky. They're the ones who really helped craft this even before I got here. A few tweaks here and there, we talked about how to add value, but they're the ones who understand the nuts and bolts and run these facilities on a daily basis, and they want to be set up to succeed as much as possible and, and to meet the, the desired outcomes for the city and to provide a quality place. And that's what we want to be, is the best option for, for people in our city to, to execute. And I do want to share as part of our process with Age Friendly, we've, we've talked about finding dedicated time, while it's not dedicated space and it's not a senior center, but finding dedicated time for senior programs, for, for demonstrations and for seminars, and then also finding out what, what seniors would like to do during certain days of the week when we have availability and we can set that time. Because that daytime period is the difficult part to raise revenue and also for participation at weekday daytime activities. So seniors are, are a perfect fit for that, and, and we're going to do better there too. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Nathan. And I, again, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. There's, there's another component there, though, that I am really happy to see. One of the things that I've always been concerned with, that was a little concerned with for a while there, was security at the facility and kids hanging out, being dropped off in the middle of the morning, and parents going to work, coming back to picking up their kids. And you guys have gotten a handle on that and have corrected that. And that's something that I was really concerned about. I thought that would, would be, you'd have a negative connotation and it would drive people away. So you've been able to create an environment that is positive and it serves the community and it's safe and secure. And so that, I applaud you for that. That was something that I was really concerned with, and I'm happy to see that that's changed. And I'm sure, working with Chief Stahl and his department and making sure, I'm, I'm hopeful that the number of calls and complaints has dropped considerably since some of the things you've been taking a more proactive approach to was that moves actually coming to the facility. I'm going to assume that, that, that there are, there are calls, come on down and tell me, tell me otherwise, but thank you very much for what you've done and made the place a lot more secure, a lot safer.
Thank you. Yeah, Chief deserves all the credit on that one, Chief Stahl. Thank you, sir. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Guss.
It's more of a comment. I, I like the fact that we're keeping up with the equipment. I have my kid here at home from college during the winter break, and he was out going to the gym and using the facility. He said that it's actually up to date. Not that I use the facility, so I wouldn't be able to tell you this, but he said that it's really up to date. So thanks for doing that. It's not the same equipment that we started with five years ago, so you guys have been keeping up to date with the technology and everything that has to do with the equipment there. So thanks for doing that, too.
Well, I'd like to thank the council for seeing the value in that, is that maintaining the facility is such a key component to us being successful. If we fall into a state of dilapidation, then that's what we're going to be viewed as. So your foresight in making those replacements, and we're hoping to do that as a part of the folks who use that fee, or who use the facility, will be the ones who help support that replacement. But yeah, thank you, and thanks again during the CIP process for supporting it.
Nathan, are you going to be doing, I mean, something as simple as, you know, while we're talking about getting the word out, and you've been doing a phenomenal job, I'll echo all the sentiments that, that everyone here has said, including Councilmember Smith, and I'll call you a Facebook warrior. That's excellent, considering the amount of time it takes to answer everybody's questions when they're coming in from 50,000 people. It, it can take a lot of time. So again, many, many thanks there. But, you know, right when you walk into a lobby is right where a lot of people start thinking about, what is it that I'm about to do, right? What am I, am I a member now? Do I, has my membership changed? What does this do to my membership, right? It's always about how it affects me. And so from that standpoint, you know, while we might have it, you know, flyers and placed on websites, et cetera, we're going to have something as simple as a placard, right, when you walk into the lobby that has some examples of, I think two things I'd like to see, the benefits, the increase in value for the membership that you get because of the way that things have changed, or you know, just as simple as, you know, coming now, or coming soon, or whatever the case is, or as of a given date. Also, I think that the other thing is some of the examples of where people fall, you know? One of the things that is difficult, and I'll go on to make a further comment in a second, but one of the things that's difficult is, we've always heard that when you have a standard rate to things, that you know, some people say it's too expensive, some people say it's too cheap, right? And I've always said, well, that's kind of a good thing, I think if you can get 50/50 there, then you've hit the sweet spot, right? No one's ever going to agree on that, but you've hit that sweet spot. But I think it'd be a good idea to have another placard there where it talks about how, in getting the word of mouth out, when you walk in and you can kind of say to yourself, "This is where I fall," and the amount of people I have, like that, you know, one you had on the slide, and people can do the math in their own heads and say, "Wow, this is more affordable than I ever thought." Or, "I knew a family that, you know, never thought that they could afford to come to Copper Sky, and they really can because of where they fall, and they need to see this, and they'll take pictures, and they'll upload it to, you know, to Facebook and other things." Would we be doing something like that?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll have that, we'll have that at the front desk, but we'll also be starting tomorrow, accepting those applications and pushing that out through Facebook. And I think that's the message that I've been trying to get out through this process, that while there is this short-term, I guess, pocket pain for seniors, which I completely understand, and it's important that we realize that, that the facility is so much more accessible for families and for, really for everybody, and even including seniors, when we talk about if there is a need, we can help meet that need. So that's the story that I'm really excited about, is seeing the families that you talked about who could never afford this, or think they could never afford it, say, "Wow, I can get that." And then what I hope to get to is the place of excellence where people won't be looking at the price point, they'll be looking at, well, the price is the price, but the level of quality that we receive from our staff. And we have ways to go, there's no doubt, not denying that, but we're trying to take those steps. But you will see that as a part of our marketing, some posters. You're also going to see a self-check-in kiosk, so if people are being helped on the right, there's going to be an open kiosk on the left, as long as you don't have a mark that blocks your membership, or you know, maybe the card expired or something like that, you'll be able to check in and move on instead of having to wait for someone to help you. So you'll see some of those changes.
And that's perfect, and I just wanted to add a comment here, you know? I think that one of the things that's really important that we, I want to run off the comment earlier about value, you said it, Councilmember Smith said it, Councilmember Gussi said it, you know, based on the equipment being updated, but it's the value proposition. I mean, when we opened this facility, when it was voted on in 2008, when it was opened in 2013, one of the things that we always knew is that we didn't know what we didn't know, right? We didn't have data points, and we also knew that we were trying to do some learning curve processes, right? We were trying to model ourselves after other facilities that had done it in different locations. And I think at the same time, we were also trying to be very much on the gym style of things. And so I think what we created, while it's simple and easy for people to understand and walk in and say, "I'm looking for a senior membership, I'm looking for a veteran membership, I'm looking for a, you know, a family membership at XYZ mark of, you know, a month, or six months, or a year past," while that's simple and easy to understand, the problem is, is I think we're running a complex organization, we're running a community center, we're running a gym, we're running a, you know, fields and volleyball, you know, classes, and you know, programming, and group X classes, and all kinds of different things in there. And so to be a complex area, we can't be vanilla in its pricing policy. We have to be more complex, so therefore it's more flexible to the way that we're able to do business, and thereby creating an inclusivity of more people. And I think that what I'd like to applaud here is I think that you've listened to the feedback of the council, listened to the feedback of the citizens, and the different groups of the citizens, the youth, families, you know, the affluent, the not-so-well-off, and everybody else, to try and take that complexity and say, while there are difficulties that we are faced with, right? We have certainly the law that states that we have lots of increased prices when it comes to minimum wage. That's a real problem, you see the costs of everything because of that going up across the board. That's a problem, those things translate down. And so, you know, as a facility that is run by the city, you can't maintain that vanilla attitude forevermore and hope that it'll never change. It has to be inclusive, and it has to be flexible, and it has to be malleable in order to encompass that. And what I hope that we truly showcase is that the value and the projection that Copper Sky gives off is far more than just a gym, but rather, again, it's an all-inclusive package that gets you things that you may not use, and you might use the heck out of. And that's the beauty of this, is that you have a lot of different avenues to pull from, and it's not just a vanilla, oh, here's a price decrease, here's a price increase. It's way more than that, and it's a bigger value, and it's way more than a gym. You know, I mean, we're not here to compete against the other gyms, we're here to create a community center that has a gym in it, that has group X classes, that has volleyball, that has all these different things, that has parks, that has Ramadas, that has fishing, but it's something for everybody, that's the way it was created, that's the way the symposiums went when we tried to figure out what everybody wanted in this place, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else, yes, Councilmember Gussi.
I just wanted to add, you mentioned the word inclusive a couple of times. This isn't working.
Oh, there it is.
There you go. You mentioned the word inclusive a couple of times, and now knowing that you're the Facebook warrior, I suggest that you please visit the Maricopa en Espanol and make sure that this information is being, I was listening to some information this morning at NPR, are Spanish-speaking communities missing out on a whole world of information because they're not getting it?
Okay, thank you for that.
Council, other questions or comments, yes, Councilmember Manfredi.
My only comment is, when I look at it, I look at, yeah, the building, the gym, and all those prices, they're fine with me, we need to increase some of them and figure out how to get more people in there and get more folks running in there. And by running, there is a linear track, so when it's summertime, you can walk and run in there. Nobody else has that. So that's a good thing. My problem, and pardon the ignorance on it, my problem is the fields and the price increase on fields.
Okay.
And when I look at it, that's the stick, not sticking point, I'm not, oh, nobody positive, but when I look at it, I need to understand why the need is there to increase the field pricing at this point.
So with, and just to kind of go through that, Pocana Park is not changing, so we'll still have those, which our hope is, as we expand our park inventory, we'll add more fields of a community standard. And that's really a problem with our, and we've talked about it with Mike Collins and the Little League, is that it's an inventory issue, and we're never going to get better until we continue to provide, or to prove a need in that process. So we're going to take steps to work with our community groups to make sure that's accessible. Our price point at $10 for our fields at Copper Sky for a community member is $6 less than Gilbert's Fields and Chandler's Field, so we're still at the low end when it comes to field pricing, and that's on purpose, and to a certain extent, because we want to attract tournaments, we want to attract people to our city. The amount of economic impact is exponential versus the $356 we get from renting fields for a day. So it's not a lot, but it does help us cover supply costs, it does make sure that if people rent it, it helps us make sure that if people rent it, they use it, they use it appropriately, and things like that. So, and there is, and I can, if you'd like, share the service level standards and the differences between Pocana Park's turf maintenance and the turf maintenance at Copper Sky. So it's mowed a different amount of times, the fields are manicured a different amount of times, because we want to set and maintain that standard, which is, I think, what the council would want for that facility. And that's what's going to allow us to attract people to come into town and support our businesses. We're working on a couple of flag football tournaments that could bring in 5,000 to 6,000 people over the course of a weekend. We have, we're working with USAA, a lot of As for baseball, or U triple S A, that's what it is, for baseball and softball, to try to get the facility busy. But we don't want to leave out our Little League and our club teams and things like that. And that becomes where, as we build these tournaments and we show that economic impact, and we become an engine for that at our facility, that will hopefully be the trigger to increase our inventory for sports fields, and so we can continue to maintain that at a community level too. So I don't know if that answers all of your questions, but that was the thought process. We are way underpriced even at our peak level compared to some of the other fields and facilities.
But does the $10 include the lights?
The light fees are still in the charge, there's a different charge, I'm sorry.
So it's a different charge for lights?
Yes, and field prep.
If you look at it, in an organization like a soccer league that wants lights and wants fields, they're going to pay, if they have a lot of games, maybe $10,000, $20,000 dollars just to be on those fields going to practice and such.
Right.
But they're still open and available when they're not reserved, correct? So they can still use them whenever they want, or do they have to pay?
Well, if you're doing an organized event on the field, where you should be an insured entity and things like that, yes, you should do a reservation and pay. Now, families can use the fields anytime, you can, yeah. Well, if it's an organized activity, they should not be doing that on those fields. It should be a rental, because it should be an insured part of their program.
And what is our tipping point for new fields for baseball and softball?
I think that's a big discussion, I think we're getting close in talking with Mike about how we're going to try to work through this process with Little League. We're talking about using soccer fields for T-ball and things like that, and, which isn't the end of the world, they're great fields, but I think you start to see, what I think has happened is everybody's fighting for the same things and not asking for more, and not showing a need for more. And by kind of changing that philosophy, and Mike's been really supportive in understanding of, yeah, you do have an opportunity to get baseball here, you do have an opportunity for flag football and lacrosse, and all of these different things, and we want to be helpful in that too, because we'd like to see Little League tournaments here and people come into our city as well. So we need to prove that on the economic impact side, and if we start hosting 30 to 40 weekends a year in our facility, I think we have to really look at, what could we do with four more fields? And a lot of that's going to be triggered by a hotel, and an additional hotel and those overnight fees, because that's where the money comes in, is rental cars and hotels. So the restaurants, we want to keep them packed and busy, and we can do that now. But the real income, the real tax levels, and the ability to expand that, I know Rick is focused on making sure the bed tax when the hotel comes in, helps us expand that inventory too.
Yeah, as a person that attends a lot of USSA softball tournaments, you know, I can envision them here, and it's going to be a great thing to have them here, but we do need more fields for Little League here, they need at least four, and one for baseball, so baseball's fine, but when it comes to softball tournaments, you need more fields at Copper Sky. So it's something that we're going to have to look at.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other things I wanted to just bring up, I know that, I don't mean to open a can of worms, so to speak, but it has been discussed briefly at BFO, we were focused, I think, more heavily here on trying to figure out the nuances of the complexities here, and thread that needle. But at the same time, I think one of the things, as we talk about, you know, memberships, the purpose of value is to show that there's a reason to not only be a member, and be a member of multiple places. And as I've talked to many people over the years, the philosophy really should be that, you know, if you want to be a member of another gym within the city, by all means, please do it. Because we want Copper Sky to add something that the other places don't offer you. And so again, it's that value proposition. But by the same token, I know Councilmember Vidal had the opportunity to speak with you earlier, but I would like to see that we come back and talk about, you know, increasing the hours. And I know we're not trying to add expenses, but I know we also are trying to figure out, if we're trying to push the catching of new people, the taking and getting back people that have left for, you know, bad experiences, or it didn't meet their needs, or whatever the case might be, while we need to do an outreach to showcase this new value to them, we also need to provide an additional segment of value where we do have additional potentials for usage of the facility. And so, you know, when we're talking about, you know, Sundays that we open so late, or maybe staying open an extra hour on the weekdays, or opening early on a Saturday, something like that. And I'm not suggesting that we go haywire with it, because we don't want those costs to get out of control, but I do think it is something we need to at least evaluate and look at so that we can, again, keep chalking up that value proposition to people, so we can attract more memberships, because that's the key.
Sure. And then we'll do as much as we possibly can, anything's possible with the right situation, and there will be obviously an increase to do that, but if that pays back in spades by offering early Monday hours, then the operational revenue would hopefully offset the cost. So I think, I think we're all going to look like geniuses when all those houses fill in around Copper Sky too, but for now, we have to be intelligent, and we have to, my hope would be that if you live right next to Planet Fitness, and you want to do, and you want fitness, that that's your fitness place, but that your family is involved in our programs, and so that it becomes a place where your kids grow up, and not just a place where you work out. And I think that's where we're probably, 90% people work out there, and the other 10% is the additional benefit. So I think that's where we can really kind of even out that stool in a sense, from that standpoint.
Agreed. Anything else, council, this time? If not, I accept a motion on this.
So moved?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Nathan.
Thank you.
Appreciate your staff and all the work they do. Thank you. And that'll take us to item 9.2, the Mayor and Council's here presentation on the progress of the marketing and development agreement for Copper Sky Commercial. This is for discussion only. Denise, take it away and give everybody the good news.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I think this is a good night for everyone, you know, with Nathan's presentation on the changes and the value added at Copper Sky. We purposely schedule these presentations on the same day so that you knew exactly what we were working on. I'm really excited to be in front of you this evening to talk about Copper Sky mixed use, because last year in February, we published an RFP for a master developer for the 18.3 acres. In late May, we did a tentative award to CPI, Commercial Properties Inc. And then in September of 2018, we, council approved a marketing and development agreement, or a marketing agreement with CPI, so just a brief timeline. And I think that you'll be able to see all of the things that CPI has been working on as well. I'm here today to give you an update, I just need to figure out how to work the presentation. This is the 18.3 acres adjacent to Copper Sky Regional Park. The north side of this project, well, let me break this down. This project is broken down into three phases and will consist of five different components. The very first phase, which is, will be the hotel on Copper Sky, so that's really exciting. We have already amended the existing zoning to allow for the hotel to develop. And we are underway and working with the hotelier, we've drafted a purchase-sell agreement, and hopefully that will be before council at the next meeting. The first phase, first and second phase will include the hotel, assisted living facility, which is 170 units, 82 of those are independent, 56 are assisted, 34 are memory care, and multifamily housing as well as 16,000 square feet of retail. So this is really exciting. Phase three of the project is the multifamily and the retail on the southern parcel. So phase one is the hotel on the south end, phase two is the assisted living and multifamily on the north parcel, and phase three will be the multifamily with retail on the bottom. So I mentioned earlier that it has five components. The first one, again, is our hotelier, which we're really excited to announce, is La Quinta Inn, and the developer is Andy Bakta. He has developed hotels in Arizona, Utah, as well as New Mexico, I believe. I personally had an opportunity to stay in his hotel in Williams, Arizona, when I was there for the Polar Express with my family last month. Beautiful facility, it's the Dulce Prototype A, and it is absolutely perfect for all the amenities and events that we are hoping to have at Copper Sky Regional Park. The senior housing will be done by Shay Connolly, the mixed-use project, Shay Connolly as well, that will, he, that developer will be responsible for both project one and two. Will also be widening Martin Luther King to allow for a large median that will allow for events to be held there. It will have several amenities in there, so that you can have farmer's markets. We also have some images in this presentation that will highlight Fountain Hills, where a similar project was completed just recently. So this is the La Quinta del Sol, this is an exterior image. It's going to be a $10 million investment, four stories, 89 rooms. It's a million dollars to operate it, 20 new jobs to the city of Maricopa. There's payroll, property tax, bedroom tax, sales tax, that is all-new revenue to the city of Maricopa. And the developer anticipates being operational by the end of 2020. These are some images of the interior of the hotel. It's just as beautiful in person, the colors, very inviting. I know that La Quinta does a really good job at taking art and really embracing the local community, so I would assume that we would maybe even have images or photos of the zephyr inside the La Quinta. So I did a comparison for everyone tonight, we had the opportunity, the city manager and myself toured a project that Shay Connolly has completed in Fountain Hills, and we did a comparison of the project. We'll have images in here as well, but in Fountain Hills, it's a $44 million private investment, 230 multifamily units, 32,000 square feet of retail. And on the right, you see that our mixed-use project is just slightly bigger. retail. And on the right, you see that our mixed-use project is just slightly bigger, at $100 million of private investment, 620 multifamily units, approximately 53,000 square feet of retail, with over 150 new jobs to the community. The assisted living facility is also going to be larger in Maricopa, and that's really exciting. The comparison here is, you know, we will have 172 units, independent, assisted, and memory care, and it will yield 225 jobs. The, these following images are the inside of the multifamily housing. So, this is a common area, this is a loft, this is an area where residents there can perhaps lease out or rent out for an event, a birthday, a gathering. And the next image is the space right outside of the common area. Please keep in mind that this project was just completed, so these planters are randomly spaced throughout, they're not where they're supposed to be. There's no plants in them. Even the lamp, that's right there. So, this project was, I mean, as we walked through it, you could smell the fresh paint. It's just wrapping up in Fountain Hills. But this is the outside, the pool area. The next image also includes a view of the pool. The, this is also four stories, so the image on the left-hand side is a view from the balcony, and you see the sidewalk, as well as the lighting. On the bottom, you see the retail where it's easily accessible and connected throughout the, I want to call it a park, but throughout the center. There's tons of public art that was very eclectic and unique. It did not all look the same. And there were different foundations and groups that had donated the art to Fountain Hills. And these are more images of the public art. So, the really cool thing about this median in the center of this road is that there's electrical in the center, and there's these just different areas where people can sit down and hang out. So, it allows for those pop-up markets, a flea market, a farmer's market on the weekend, and it's really convenient, because you'll have that retail on both sides of this median. These are just some more images of this common space. The assisted living was absolutely gorgeous. The brand in Fountain Hills is Morning Star. That is not the brand in Maricopa, we'll have a different brand, and we'll disclose that as soon as we know who it is. But very similar, it's, like I said, ours is going to be slightly larger. This is an image on the left-hand side of the entrance as you go into the facility. These are just other common areas upstairs. This is the kitchen area, this is not where the meals are all made, but this is, you know, for people that are looking to prepare meals and share meals with family or guests. This is also a common area, there's also a movie theater in there. This is outside common area, there were two common areas. One was for, dedicated for memory care residents, and the other was for open and for those that required less assistance. So, those are some of the images that we have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, questions on this? Yes, Vice Mayor.
What's the population of Fountain Hills, you know?
I'm sorry?
Population of Fountain Hills?
It's about 26,000.
About 26,000.
Other questions? Feedback, concerns? We're very excited for this. Thank you very much for all your hard work, and for the work that everybody has been doing behind the scenes, as well as outreach. And I know that the development group is obviously very excited, and I think that this is a great new change for Maricopa on the horizon here, with the things and the jobs, and the many other subsequent type of professions that will come, and be, and desire to be in and around this area, and in the city in general, because of this new avenue upon which is coming out of the ground. So, I think we're very excited, certainly excited for the hotel, and for tournaments, and all the things that we've been working towards for so many years. Nice to see that coming to fruition. So, thank you very much. Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, I should say congratulations first before I ask a question. Thank you very much. Could you share something with me, and if you don't mind, about the developer, and how you felt about the developer, the level of professionalism? Would you mind sharing that with the rest of the council?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, we have been working with CPI, and there's one person in particular on the team that has expressed interest in Maricopa for quite some time. And it really is, it's Cecil Yates. He is just absolutely so much fun to work with, because he has total faith in the community. We don't have to convince him that there's a "there" there, because, you know, in my industry and what I do on a daily basis, I have developers telling me on a daily basis, well, where's the "there" there? And we have another champion on our side, and that CPI with Cecil Yates and the entire team, touting and telling the Maricopa story. And they've partnered up with Shay Connolly, who has told us time and time again, this is a no-brainer. The residential units will be able to sustain the retail.
Let's start right briefly.
Is the dance guy the owner of the properties? And frankly, I can't remember his name at the moment, but he used to live here in Maricopa many years ago. Actually, he said that he never thought he would be back. But when he heard from Andy about his recommendation to build a hotel here, he wanted to come see for himself. So, he came, not once, but twice, and met with me once, and with both of us on the second occasion. And what really sold him on Maricopa was your vision for Maricopa, and the fact that you don't just talk the talk, you walk the walk. And the thing that impressed him the most is, what we're trying to do is raise the community's wealth as a part of our process, and that resonated with him. So, he had indicated, he was working on a couple of other projects, and he said, if I could stop those today and immediately transfer all those resources here, I would. And so, I think that speaks well. And in part, we're hearing that from our residential developers, too, in that it's getting easier to work here. There's more quality of life here. They feel that this city not only has it today, but has it tomorrow. And we heard a little bit about that with our water resources and other things. And lastly, with Bart Shay, you know, who's one of the largest family-owned builders in the nation. He could build anywhere, and you can see, he's taken on 90% of this project. He's personally investing in 50%, with outside investors being the other 50%, and he will not relinquish his ownership. He said he's committed in perpetuity. And frankly, we've already, his goal is to have it all built in three years, from beginning to end. And so, we're already starting to have talks on what next.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else, Counsel, this time? Any other questions for Denise? Excellent. Thank you very much, again. Appreciate all your work.
Absolutely.
And very excited for Maricopa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, that concludes our agenda. So, Counsel, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you in two weeks.